We realize we're still behind on leads and we're trying to get out there as soon as the weather breaks between patch and holes, picking up leads, and now brush is going to start soon. We're still going to try to improve those two services, but haven't come up with a total plan yet. Electric Department, they're still working on the wastewater. They met, actually Doug went to Akron this week to find out about the electric for the wastewater plant, the issues that they're having, finishing up on that electric rate study. We're going to have a special council meeting on April 22nd at 7:00 PM to go over the electric rate study that Courtney's associates have done for us and will go over, and that's the only thing we'll cover that night, so it's April 22nd at 7:00 PM. Electric Department, they took down the Christmas lights on Main Street. They're in good weather this week, or last week I should say. Parking Cemetery, they've been looking at getting the Christmas decorations down and they'll be continuing to do that, putting some of the displays in the trucks. And we're working on preparing the Pavilion 1 and 2 the last couple of weeks for upcoming I did, I also talked to, as far as the water plant was concerned, I did talk to USDA this past week. We had that special hearing on the water rates and it was a, I asked them about maybe phasing in a rate and they seemed to be pretty supportive of that. As far as that, even though we don't know what that exact fee is, what it's going to be, we don't know what the costs are going to be, the total cost of the water plant's going to be, you know, if we phase it in, we'll be able to gauge ourselves and be able to adjust it as we find more information on it. And just a side note, we need to make a motion for passing of the budget. That was, did not occur last meeting. It was just a, but we're allowed to go ahead and make that motion, even though we had our first reading on the ordinance last week. It was just, it was pointed out to us afterwards that that was missed, though it was on the agenda, we did not get to it.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Dan?
Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, you have a call me, a police department report in there, mayor's court and fire department report. That's all I have.
We already received a copy of the bill list for March 18th. Are any questions or comments?
Yes. And there's office supplies.
Mm-hmm.
Just curiosity, we have a lot of office supply store here in town and we're using somebody else. Do we give?
We do, we use Henderson's.
Okay, okay, just happened this time, it wasn't, okay.
Okay, move to old business. Due to the length of the ordinances, can I have a motion to read them by title only?
So moved. Second.
Dan?
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14-0-2755, second reading. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Columbia, State of Ohio for the year 2014 and ending December 31st, 2014.
So moved. Back cut.
Any questions? Dan?
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14-0-2756, second reading. An ordinance transferring $1,700,000 from the income tax fund, $850,000 to the general fund and $850,000 to the capital improvement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise. Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Dan?
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14-0-2757, second reading. An ordinance transferring $376,500 from the general fund, $160,500 to the cemetery fund, and $175,000 to the park fund, and $85,000 to the police pension fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise. Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Dan?
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14-0-2758, second reading. An ordinance amending Section 298.01 of the codified ordinances of Columbia for the purpose of increasing court costs in mayor's court cases.
So moved.
Second.
Now, I do have a question. Dan, maybe you can help me back this up. The reason we can have a mayor's court and the mayor hear the cases versus a magistrate is because we are a chartered form of government and the mayor is not the chief financial officer.
And I think you raised this issue earlier in the week and I think it's a good point and we've addressed it with regard to calculation of these costs. We want to take the mayor's compensation out of that equation entirely and he has to achieve, recalculate based upon that adjustment. And I believe we did that and we now have an increase which does not reflect any, does not reflect upon the mayor's compensation whatsoever.
Could you like me to comment on that? We issued a memorandum and a discussion at a previous council meeting pursuant to questions from the court clerk and the mayor about looking at the costs and if they were covering the expenses. Calculations were presented and a question arose about the mayor's salary. We can do it any way the council chooses. Backing the mayor's salary out results in a reduction in the number that you were given of about 13.5%. If you translate that into court cost calculation, it would reduce it from a $20 increase to roughly a $15 increase, $14.60. I recommend you don't do $0.60 whichever way you go, things are harder to calculate for, but that would be the net effect of.
Can I explain a little? The reason that we can have a mayor's court with the mayor doing it is that the mayor has no financial benefit of income to the city to himself because of mayor court. Where in a city, say Washington, Virginia, they do have, so putting this expense in there, it would have looked inappropriate that that cost would have been in the, in those things. So do you want to vote to amend that?
We have, the mayor in this case, we use the figure $1,950, which is half the salary. If you hear his one case, he is $1,950. If you hear his 1,000 cases, he is $1,950. It's impossible for him to manipulate his personal salary under our particular.
Yeah.
I don't financially gain from the court. It's the appearance.
It would be the appearance of who did it, the way we had it brought up.
And it's a legitimate point and I recommend the change. I think that's.
And that would be the net effect is a reduction from $20 to $15 if that's council's plan.
Do we, do we need a motion to amend the ordinance we passed the first reading last?
Yes.
Because it was 20 in the last meeting.
Is there a purpose to lower it? Can we leave it at 20? Can we leave it at 20?
You have to justify the expense. You can't just make an expense.
Okay.
I think you could justify it regardless from a, it's been bare bones for 16 years, nothing's been upgraded or taken care of. This fixes the immediate concern, but it does nothing to.
Well, we can't, we can't go above the actual expenses. We have to justify them.
Well, I think no different than our, our water plant, we have expenses now to plan for the future. So, I mean, we, you can change it. I don't have a stake in the game, but I mean, I've only been on this job for two months and the very first thing I noticed was that the mayor's court was, I don't think the costs have been raised since Dick was in there. The computer was the same computer that, that was there when Dick was there. We have no software, we're doing everything on paper that's supposed to be done electronically. There's no network, there's no internet access, none of the things that you would normally find are there. So, so doing this puts in a basic computer and fixes a couple of necessities, but it does nothing to help build off of what you need to sustain that. It just puts a patch on, on fixing the antique problem that's there currently.
You may, must have wrote a different report than I did from the chief because I think he addressed everything very in detail in his report.
There was no difference.
We just got a different interpretation of it.
Chief?
So I would make a motion, we amend.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask the chief a question. If it's increased by $15 rather than $20 increase, do you really feel that that will cover the costs of the improvements that we need to do?
I think that the amounts that I gave you were based on the research that I did and those amounts that might have changed. I do understand the concern and I would refer to council on your wisdom on that. I have no dog in the fight, that's right, like, I did the research. I have nothing to do with the mayor's court except that I sit here and provide security for it, but the answer to your question is the original numbers I gave you are what I believe would cover the expenses. We can do less than that and these numbers may adjust as we go on. For instance, maybe we stretch the life cycle a lot to four years on the computer. There are ways to make that, the number work if I, if we have to make it work. I mean, it's not a thing that's etched in stone. These are the recommendations, the recommendations of subject conditions, conditions change. I'll go if that answered your question.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Do we, do you think we should roll it back by what the chief said?
Well, we can justify the $20. Yeah, we have to roll it back.
Okay.
Do we not then? You have to justify the cost, don't you?
I think it's appropriate because of the appearances I said. One could question the reality of the situation, but the appearance is important and if someone did raise a question regarding the calculation of costs based upon inclusion of the mayor's salary, one could make the argument that the mayor had an interest in, in the outcome of the mayor's court. And that's, that's probably, that's not a very powerful argument, but why bother with it? That's my point. And I also want to say that notwithstanding the fact that our software is probably outdated and the costs the chief has calculated will improve that situation considerably and our mayor's court clerk will function a little bit quicker, will function a little more easily, more efficiently, more appropriately. In the last 13 years, we have had something like 4,500 cases go through the mayor's court. Perhaps 96, 97% of those are traffic cases. Every one of them either showed up or paid, but for 42 cases, and those cases were resolved by way of, of a forfeiture of a driver's license or, or, for costs. So my point is, notwithstanding the handwork that the mayor's court has had to do, they kept up with their obligation 100% as far as I'm concerned. So I think the kudos should go to the mayor's court clerk.
Oh, I.
Function of the court and the reason for raising the cost is simply to account for those things that the chief has provided. So reducing it from 20 to 15 accomplishes Lowell's purpose, which I think is legitimate, and a 15 accomplishes the chief's purpose, which is likewise.
Was it 1460 or 1560?
It was 1460. I'd recommend $15 for this. Being hard to account for.
Yeah, I would make a motion, we amend this ordinance to reflect $15 instead of the $20 cost at this time.
I'll second that. Dan?
Okay, this is a vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Now we took it on as amended. Souders?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
For mayor, point of order, if I could, what would we be getting placing at the new rate? Do you have a date on that? If I could tell the clerk?
The effect of state of this ordinance.
That's today then?
So you advise the clerk accordingly.
Okay. Does something need to come from the mayor?
I can hear.
The court costs are set by council, not me. Once the ordinance is in effect, the.
Like those power and that.
They're right here, designed for.
Roger that.
Okay, on our new business, ordinance number 14-0-2759, first reading. An ordinance has adopted for sodium chloride rock salt to be procured by the ODOT through two separate contracts, a summer fill and a winter use. A summer fill contract, contract number 418-15, that shall commence upon the date of contract award, May 8th, estimated award date, and expire on October 31st, 2014. And a winter use contract, contract number 018-15, that shall commence November 1st, 2014, and expire May 31st, 2015. Move to approve.
Second.
Dan?
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, council comments?
If you would, would you indulge me? I've got three subjects I'd like to talk about tonight. First of which is, thank you Lance for talking with the USDA as I asked you to. I think it's expedient that we get started as soon as possible with our water rates. Therefore, I would make a motion that we start the necessary legislation to increase the water rates by $11 a month. $4 increase in six months, an additional $4 increase in another six months with the idea that if we can, we will roll this back when we know exactly what the cost is. By reason for saying doing that now, we need to get money sent back in order to pay for this water plant.
I would second that. This is the drop in ordinance, right?
Yes.
Drop the necessary legislation.
Mr. Simpson, that was $11 now, $4 in six months, and what was the other figure?
The additional $4 in another six months or within a year. Is that for a month?
Okay, that's the increase per month.
Is it right now?
Well, it has to go through the ordinances if it passes. It's not going to happen if it's water bill.
I have one comment and it would just be that what you're about to do is going to cost more than what you just counted criminals in our town and the court costs that they pay.
And I agree Lance, but the whole thing is, is I asked Lance to contact USDA and find out what we really need to do so that the USDA will owe us the money to build the water plant. And this is what I understand the young lady has basically said, that she would like this. And if she says no, chances are we don't get the money, we don't get the water plant. So I think we need to get started now.
So that also.
And roll back later if we can.
No, it does not increase the sewer.
Well, the water rate should be the same.
They're not.
No, they're not.
The sewer rate's already higher because of the new, new sewer plant.
And that become higher under a similar situation that we're in right now.
But, but why not start at $5 and stagger it up if you need to? Why, I mean, we have, we don't even have an idea of, of timeframe. I mean. But we do know that we're going to have to raise it at least that $10 and probably more by the time the plant is finally built. I guess my only thought would be if you're thinking about doing an ordinance that includes all three increases and the timing of all three increases, I would be happier with one that simply did the, the $11 or $10 now and that in six months or whatever timeframe we feel is appropriate, we do a separate ordinance and do an additional increase at that time. And I don't know that that would be exactly what she agreed, what the USDA person said, but I think I would like to see it.
You gave her that number correct?
I gave her a phased in, like, yeah. Generic though. I mean, you, you said the 11 and, and five and five. Right, yeah. So, I mean, if you would have said five and four and four, she would have said, yes, I like the fact that you're willing to do something right now. The way I, I mean, I talked to her, this wasn't a five minute conversation, Brian. We talked for probably 35 minutes about getting prepared for this water plant and we know that, let's just say what a $5 would do. We've known all along that the plant is going to at least cost $10 million or $12 million. If we would have done this, if we would have done something years ago, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it, so. But that doesn't have anything to do with $5 compared to $10 and we don't know if we're building in one year or three years. But this is, this is a working towards that 21, see 11 and four and four, it's 19. I think it's just working to drive people out of town. You, you, we have to have a water plant. And a $12 million water plant, you're going to have to increase at least $11. I mean, we secured the funding to do that. Well, we just said that the only reason we're doing this is so that we can secure funding. If we've already secured funding, then we don't have to do this to secure funding.
I don't know that we have to.
Yeah. We have to demonstrate.
We have to demonstrate an ability to pay for it before we get the funding.
I, I went online and I found the Aqua Ohio site and they have a area where it allows you to calculate what your residential rate would be. And for areas close to us like U-Milton and Poland and Struthers, this all comes out of the Struthers, they have a, according to this website, and I don't know how accurate it is, it's Aqua Ohio, I assume it's up to date, they have a service charge, a monthly service charge for a 5/8, sorry, it would be 3/4 inch line, of $10.58. And then they charge $7.31 and some odd fraction for every 100,000 after that until you get up to 18, 18,000 gallons a month and then it drops down a little bit. If you have a 1-inch line, they charge $23. If you have an inch and a half, it goes to 48, all the way up to 600, or a 6-inch line where they charge $744. So that's, that's the nearest private group that's around us and they already are higher than what we're basically proposing for this particular starting point, I think.
They're a for-profit company though.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that that is the, that is the, the cost of producing water for a for-profit company.
But we're not for profit.
Uh, yeah, but we still have to pay our costs. But again, I think I, I would be much more comfortable with this rather than being a single ordinance that said, let's do, let's put in place now all the increments. I'd rather see us put in a, a single increment right now and then in time say it's time to put the next increment, the next increment as we see where things are going and what's happening.
You're asking that question and I'm going along with what Lance has told me and that's
the reason why we hired him, Dan. I, I think it's necessary at this time and it, like I said, in the motion, we may roll it back once we can see where we're going, but right now we need to build up a fund to pay for this and the more we build up now, the less we have to finance and the less it's going to cost all the way down the line. End result.
And I do really expect to find out some, some better figures within six months. I really do.
And this can't happen for a month anyhow.
I'd rather in six months say it's time to increase them again rather than, than have it automatically be put into the ordinance that it's going to happen in six months. That's just my feeling.
I'd rather not have my name associated with it. We've got to start someplace. I'm not going to sit up here and want to say, geez, I don't want that $11 assessed to me or $15, but if we want a water plant, which we need a water plant, we have got to start somewhere. No one, no one is going to agree with that. But that's just about as bare bones as you can get right now. But we do have to start. You're saying fine, all right?
If you're going to increase anyway, what, what does that hurt? Because if you, it still gives you time, you could change it three months from now to six months.
You know, I'll go, I'll go along with the idea of what Dick was saying, okay, maybe set that ordinance so that we look at it in six months. But we have, we're, we're sitting here, we're hemming around and it's not going to get done. And that's what happened to the council before and the council before that. We're not the nice people, but we've got to do something, okay? That's my take on it.
That could affect the motel.
Ask him.
Would their water rates? They pay the same water rates.
They pay the same as everybody else.
Business pays the same as residential.
Per gallon.
I think, and you think you're asking the wrong person, how it would affect every residency try to stop.
Yeah, yeah, I don't understand why we're so worried about the hotel. They even have a bar yet. You know, I mean, seriously.
Do you think it will affect moving into town, selling lots?
I think that will affect it. I think the 88 room hotel in the DM will affect it more than the water rates. I mean, being honest. I hear council talk about some stuff there that's, you know, I mean, I live in Aqua Ohio, you know, in Portland and off, you know, our rates, when I go put a commercial building up, those caps are a lot more. I don't know what their rates are, but I know one thing, if I was city manager or whatever, I would have two meters for the quality of homes we're putting in. I'd have a meter for domestic and I have a meter in there for street. You would get a lot more people to spend money sprinkling their yards and shutting the meter off because they don't want to sprinkle because they're paying for sanitary sewer holes. I have two meters on my house and I sprinkle an acre of property, you know, somebody here has to set regulations. You would make a lot more money because you have a lot more people using their water. I mean, I look at stuff a little different than, you know, how you guys make it or break even or want to make money or however it is, you know.
Well, I don't think you have a bad idea with that two meters there. I mean, I think, you know, the old part of town, we never thought about watering our yard. I don't, you know, mother nature put it there, if it dries up, I don't have to mow it, I'm happy, you know?
You have, you have a different point in town though.
I agree completely with you, that's why I think that second meter's a good idea.
And you would spend, people would, then you would use a lot more water.
And I wouldn't disagree with that either, but I think that's a different part, part of legislation that we, that we should, we'll get to. I, I don't disagree. Just, just like when you, somebody fills a swimming pool. We put a meter out there for them to fill the pool and we don't charge them for sewer. But I, I don't disagree with that. I, but I can say, I think we're off in a different spot right now.
Dan, how do you feel about going with this proposal, $10 and revisiting in six months?
I, I think that's fair to the community, okay? But we were going to, we were going to do it at 11, not 10, okay? You know, that's, that's kind of meeting the situation halfway in between, you know?
I would go along with that on the second if I do it on this first.
Do we need to amend the motion or are you?
I'm beside myself. Reason why I'm saying that is we put this off for us to throw up doing something. Again, my motion was to say that we can change this later if needs be. All we need is. All we need is different legislation six months from now if it's not working the way we think, if we're making more money than we thought we would or what have you. But at least this would be a plan, a procedure.
What if we compromise and get ready for three, six months until we revisit it?
I don't think we'll get to where we need to be. But, yeah, I, I just call for the question.
There's a couple of comments that, that might be made in the back. Yeah, go ahead. I'll give you yours, okay?
My, Dave Wagner, seventy-three. Um, I'm the one with the five hundred eighty-nine dollar electric water bill this month, once again. Um, I know we'll be talking about your electric, I don't understand why it's supposed to come so that it would be just adjusted with the budget, but that's what you guys chose to do. But I don't understand, like, I'm going to, we're just at the job run, I get the quotes and if I don't like, if somebody's too high, I shuffle around, I get another company, I don't understand why they're, that they're stuck with a certain company to do this water plant. Um, that's my first comment. My second one is because of my high thing and being a senior on disability, I've had to go out and get some outside help to help pay for my utilities, I don't think I've also got some other expenses. And I just want you to know that I've been to Lisbon, North Lima, La Conia, and I've heard from these different people how they're getting a lot of plumbing out of people and I think it would actually be a shame that our utilities are so high that your residents have to go out of town to get assistance to pay the utility bills.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this number established for the grant?
No, not yet. We, we know that it's at least, I think we can all agree that it's gonna cost at least twelve point seven million dollars.
Twelve point seven million dollars, that's. Well, we, we put it up to bid and the bids came in much, much higher than that, so we're going through a process to rebid it now.
And we canceled it, yeah. Now, now we're gonna.
The number, the numbers, there's a lot of basis to the numbers that you're throwing out. It was, the bids came in way over budget.
I would still, Dick, like to amend, uh.
Well, I've moved to amend Dick's motion for, uh, ten dollars, uh.
It was eleven, yeah.
Okay, for, for eleven dollars and with no step increases until council chooses to amend the ordinance.
I went in that, I went in that ordinance that I seconded your amendment though, that it is revisited in six months.
Okay.
Because we shouldn't have the price by then. We had a motion in a second.
I was, I was amending the motion.
We can amend it.
Okay. He chooses to amend.
If he can, okay. Well, I, I think with Nashville should, I believe by Robert School's vote, we should vote on what was, what was done and if we don't like that, then come up with a new motion, you know?
We can do that, too.
We can amend it.
That's why I said, let's call for a question. We can move to the next one.
You second on your motion?
Second, yeah.
Let's just gotta retract it.
All right, you can call a question, up or down? Goes down?
On the amendment.
No, he's, he's saying call the original motion.
But you made an amendment and I seconded it, so we'll vote on the amendment. Didn't make the motion, you seconded his motion. He, he, but he.
I made a motion to amend.
He made a motion to amend.
You can do that.
You can do that. And I'll second that motion also.
Dan?
So for clarification, Mr. Blaisdell, are they voting now on the amendment?
Amendment.
They are, that's what they're doing now. Okay.
The amendment for eleven dollars for six months and revisit it in six months but no step increase.
Correct. That is what the amendment is.
It's not, it's not just for six months, it can continue on out until it's amended.
Right. Right. The motion was to amend it to eleven dollars effective now and revisit it in six months is what the wording was. Schoniger?
Yes.
Callager?
No.
Simpson?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Or yes, so that motion carries.
So now we need to vote on the.
Now we vote on the, on the amendment.
On the amended motion.
Yes, now we vote on this motion as amended.
Dan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes. That's the way the ordinance will be brought up now, now that isn't passed.
That's the repair.
It's repair and then we will vote on it. Right. Also, I said it too, if you think I'd like to talk about, uh, reading Lance's to mayor and council, that says that Brian has requested business cards, email, voicemail capabilities. Could you explain that to me, the voicemail capability?
I asked to have a, a voicemail box created here, not a phone or anything, but just like a virtual voicemail box that can be called into. Um, I've, I've done everything from speak to congressmen to local businesses and everything else and the only way that I can give them a return call number is at my home. I had asked them to create business cards that have just a voicemail box on them, so they're calling here rather than my home. First of all, I think the semblance of professionalism or clear back to what we discussed a few minutes ago, what was there, but also it keeps my line from ringing when my kids are answering the, the phone to discuss city questions. I didn't think it was very professional, uh, so that's why I asked for that.
Well, I, I know the mayor prior to me, Charlie Dotson, didn't have this capability. I know I didn't have it. I don't believe Lowell had it. And I don't believe that, uh, Dave had it. Uh, I see no need for it. Uh, I question if that should happen. I don't have a problem with business cards or possibly be even emailed, uh, for each of us and all an equal, okay? Uh, but as far as voice mail coming to city hall, my next question is, is when you gonna ask for a desk in Lance's office?
I'm not.
No, I just, I don't think that's necessary. I think that, I, I don't believe the position of the mayor carries the requirement to have this. Uh, the mayor can't truly answer any real questions for the city. The man on the other side, the red shirt, does. And all that type of question should go there.
I'll give you a very good example. I received, um, emails from the current auditor of the state because the city was undergoing an audit. They wanted to, to discuss things with me, um, in regards to the audit. They didn't wanna talk to Lance, they didn't wanna talk to Mike, they wanted to talk to me.
But you don't have any power to do that.
But they wanted to anyways. What did I do? Did I defer it back to you?
Yeah, she wanted to talk to specifically either the, the prior mayor or, and I said, well, Brian's only been in office for like three days. You know, I, I don't know how he's gonna be able to answer these questions. Uh, and, and she asked, you know, was he a council member?
She called me at work, at my office. So, I don't care how you do it. I don't think that there's really even a cost to this voicemail box.
You got a Comcast out here, right?
Yeah.
It's free.
That's what I'm trying to say, so I, 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 I don't, I don't care if I don't have one, but just because you guys never did doesn't make it right.
It doesn't make it right to have one, but you have no need for it.
From a technology standpoint, I, I think I do have a need for it. Um, and, and you can take it away, I really don't care, it just speaks volumes to the mentality of who's running the city and the decisions that are being made, that voicemail is not thought to be a, a needed requirement in this day and age. I don't know how anyone could do anything without that. Um, but you didn't have it because I, I, maybe it wasn't something that was readily accessible. I mean, we had answering machines, not voicemail systems. Um, I, I think that, that technology's changed, I, I don't think that we've upgraded that computer in the mayor's court for sixteen years because it wasn't necessary. Even though whenever I was in Columbus, I was told that we're the only city that, that was represented down there that wasn't filing things electronically because we didn't do it. Doesn't mean it's wrong, it just means that you guys chose not to.
But Brian, you have more communications than anybody in this room, I have to believe. I believe you have two Facebook accounts and I believe you're on Twitter, you have your own website, you have two telephones.
I don't have that.
I mean, if I can't get ahold of you, and, and how do you handle this voicemail? How, how, you come in?
It's still not even working, I, I, I don't know. It, it, it's supposed to be online so that I could, I could sit at my computer desk at, at work and check it out, if, if a voicemail comes in. I received, hold on one second, I, I received a, a call here the other day, they, they came to here for me from Elton Prison, wanting, wanting to invite the mayor from a ceremonial standpoint to go out to Elton Prison. They couldn't get me the message, they, they couldn't leave me a message. How do you do it?
Your cellphone.
My cellphone is a property of Valley Office Solutions. The last thing I want is city business being brought to my personal things.
Did they do away with US Mail? That's how I got my invitation to the.
You guys, this is crazy, but go ahead, I don't, I don't care. Let's lower core costs, raise water bills and remove technology. I, I, we got a lot of good people making decisions.
Oh, yeah.
Point of order. You brought it up, you asked, that, that's why.
I just don't understand if y'all have Comcast, it's free. Voicemail is free.
Well, I'd like to know what the rest of council feel, how they feel about it, because I, I don't think it's a necessary thing. I'm afraid it's gonna end up being a clog in the wheels of progress. Uh, I just don't, when I was mayor, when you were mayor, we, we don't answer questions. You always refer them to the, uh, the city manager.
I answer questions, there's the difference.
You're not supposed to.
Not supposed to.
Well, the last, I, this is a free country, right?
You can answer questions as a private citizen.
I mean, if this man wants to have a Facebook account, you got to pay him.
It, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, the, the intention here is to try to, to bring light to the fact that they think I'm trying to do something, uh, to, and they're trying to embarrass me. It, it's fine, I, I don't care, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. Uh, I, I just think that the people that, that live in the city need to understand that when they vote, there are consequences. And, uh, the people that we have sitting up here right now think that this is bad to have voicemail. I don't think anyone, it, I, I don't, I don't even know what to say, I think it's ridiculous.
Well, I think you try to make one foot forward and you're required to feedback. That's my opinion. I don't understand.
I really don't care, take, take it away, I, I just think it makes you guys look foolish.
And the third thing I want to mention, uh, obviously nobody can make a decision on that, is, uh, a few meetings ago, we had, uh, Chamber of Commerce here discussing a bed tax, there's been no conversation on that, I'd like to see that put on the agenda to have some conversation.
That's what I was my concern, that maybe it would be forgotten.
No, no. So, it, it's really up to them to come back to answer some questions regarding the position. And I think Attorney Barbie and I agree on the legality, on the questions whether or not they want push issues in light of those legality. So, he's going to look into it further, make some further inquiries and he's supposed to.
Well, something I'd like to clear, one more there. There is one more I'd like to speak to, and I know Katie don't make the headlines, but yeah, the last, after the last meeting, the headline kind of read, Combienna can't grant everything that, uh, that superintendent's wanted. And sometime I'd like to see a headline that says, uh, Combienna bought a new ambulance last year, or bought a new fire truck. We've always had a balanced budget through the low times, we've always had, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on paving, which we haven't in the past. I'd just like sometime to say, uh, Combienna's looking good.
I agree with.
I also agree with that comment because there was a secondary comment that was, was posted in the, the paper this week, um, that Mr. Hudson had, had responded back to. Um, and I think the article that, that you wrote, Katie, suggested that I called out the school was the words that were used in, in that article. And I went back and physically reviewed the audio after that was in there and I made one statement responding to Jacob's, uh, I think, or however you say his name, and the words that I used were, I do agree that past, it is past council's fault that we should have been saving up for this water plant, just as I also believe the school should have been doing that with the roof. I wasn't calling out the school, I was taking personal responsibility sitting on the last council that, that we didn't do something. I wasn't trying to throw the school under the bus, but it was presented that way, which probably made you respond the way you did.
Well, I absolutely did because I don't pretend to understand what goes on at council when I'm not here. If you wanna attend the school board meeting.
I can't, they're on planning commission night.
First Tuesday tomorrow.
They're on.
It's third, second Tuesday.
Planning commission night, I can't.
Or planning commission is ever canceled, I'm going to personally.
I, 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 I would come to them. Board, board, board meeting started at six o'clock. Six-thirty, it was in the paper. They were at six-thirty, but I still try to do split sessions, okay? To go there and, and make it back here to try to observe planning. I'd rather.
Here's, you know, part of my comment that possibly didn't get my event, we've looked in the newspaper, however, my point is I would rather see cooperation between the community, which is fantastic, and our school system, which I believe is fantastic also. In light of that, all I'm asking is if anybody has any concerns, call us and ask us, don't make comments about funding sources that possibly aren't understood. That's the same as if I come here and pretend I understand everything about the water.
There was no discussion, it was one, one sentence and that was the sentence that was stated.
I understand that, but do you understand how that came off?
I didn't, I didn't write it. I, I can't help how that came off, that wasn't what it was saying.
But do you understand how it sounded when it was read?
But, but I, I can't help that, you have to understand that, I, I don't, I don't write the articles.
All I'm doing is inviting you to the rise, if you want something to school board, you can have it.
I would absolutely.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I, I supported your levy, I mean, I had signs in my yard, so.
Appreciate it.
And.
More than appreciate it.
But, but there were comments made, I mean, to, to wrap this up, since you're, you're here, there was a comment made that, um, you didn't appreciate comments happening at council regarding the school, but the only time we ever had those comments here in the past was when the school came here and tried to, to petition our support. So it was brought to council to discuss that and there was no other further discussion ever. And my comment had nothing to do with support or not support, it was planning or lack thereof and I didn't reference the school and your lack of planning, I referenced us and I, I pulled them together to say, we're raising fees right now, which we just did, we're, we're, we're preparing to, and there was a levy associated with the other, and if we raise all these costs up, it, Dick, Dick's referenced us as a, a business multiple times, of which you're a board member of, correct? If we continue to raise our prices, there are many other choices of where to shop. And I'm afraid that if we keep raising our prices, people will shop elsewhere. So in the school, I mean, you, you gotta compete with Crestview and South Range, we have to compete with Salem and East Palestine and Boardman and Poland, we all have to work together. And so my comment, which wasn't printed, was just that we have to, we're pulling these things together and we have to be very careful of, of what we're spending. And that, that didn't make it to you and I understand where the, where the disconnect came, but there was no discussion here of school.
Well, I appreciate that clarification, let's just leave it, let's try to cooperate.
I agree.
You know, wholeheartedly on behalf of the board, I can say we want to cooperate with the community. Do you know, all of you feel the same way?
I think we do. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.[1755.12]
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.